And to the recorder, keep the sentence.
Or nature, under God, in the gospel, with the Lord being our church.
Fine, Lord.
Please, okay.
Well, number seven, Gene.
Okay, this is the October ninth regular planning commission meeting for Smithville Township. Uh, we have some members that are not here and who do you know who they are? Um, we need to go through the meeting minutes of August fourteenth and September eleventh. So we'll do the August fourteen first. Anybody have any questions or comments on those meeting minutes?
Make a motion that we approve the for over forty please.
Okay, Gene's second, all his favor.
Aye.
Okay, now the September eleventh meeting minutes.
My second, we have, I, Martin, that we approved a minute for September.
Those favor.
Aye.
Okay, so on, very good, uh, old business, Three Point Garden, I believe we had a request for extension.
That's correct, uh, excuse me, they provided so far request table for this meeting and next meeting. Um, the extension that they have said will be at least until December eighteenth is pending. But if I don't receive it by next Thursday, then we place on the board of supervisors again for denial.
Okay, for now, we can pass on it.
Yes.
So we make a motion, I'll make a motion, we table this until. They come back to us. Second. All the favor.
Aye.
All right, uh, next one is the Verizon Wireless Magic Cauldron, I believe they also requested it.
That is correct, uh, Trent Williams requested that people move from this meeting and they provided an extension till January eighth.
Make a motion, we table this until the January meeting. It's like. Favor.
Aye.
Good, new business ordinance for data center. I'm hearing it on October twenty seventh. Yeah, let's pull that up. It's in the packet, right?
Yep.
Okay. So last time we looked at this, Julie, we had some comments, you, can you refresh our memory what they were?
Um, I know that there was a, and I apologize, Alex is not able to be here, so I stepped in a little bit on the wing. Um, as far as comments that I remember being discussed last time were centered largely around water.
Yeah.
He's just fifteen from recently, supervisors, um, since then, because of. The importance of the board's feelings, this has been set in a pipeline for adoption, uh, it was advertised so far on. October first and eighth and will be in the paper on the fourteen. Um, but Alex has made the changes that you guys have talked about and those aren't even.
Yeah, so I believe, well, let's, so let's go to where it does talk about water, I want to make sure that that was.
That's on page nine.
That's the tilt cap or in sewer. Yep. B. Okay, it still has, oh wait, it still has it, a hundred thousand gallons per day, right?
Yeah, that's a, that's a. Yeah, one of the concerns now is that on paragraph C three, uh, C I I. Uh, that's in. That's the section's half utilities, that's in each order and sewer, page ten. Okay, where it says withdrawals of a hundred thousand gallons, that term withdrawal implied that they can dump that water. On the property, if they dump a hundred thousand gallons per day on the property, you're talking thirty six million five hundred thousand gallons. A year, a year, so they can wind up, if this water is polluted, it's gonna, it's gonna lead into, into wells.
Yeah, it will not be polluted, it will just be cooling water.
But if it does become polluted.
Well, it won't, but okay.
All things considered, the other thing is that it doesn't have, it doesn't state. Or require closed loops.
Um, there was discussion, I believe John and Ron who have commented on this, that the. Board does not have the authority to tell a business how to move its boundary.
Um, there's, that's why I provided that. For in that. Did some research today. Yes, I have it. Okay, then, it, it's in there, it's all the states that are dealing with the data centers. And a lot of the concern that they have are. The majority of concerns is water and, and electricity and power usage. And power usage is where they can, they can, they can take the electricity off the grid. And it, what, what it does essentially it spikes the cost of electricity because the utility companies are gonna. Raise the prices and we're gonna get stuck with, with, uh, these new prices. Uh, but there's nothing in your order that says that the data center will offset the rising cost. And that's one of the things in, in the research that I did, where the states are saying that you, the data centers have to compensate. Uh, the, the consumer. Or the community for the rising price.
That makes sense.
Okay, so, that's because they, they're gonna use a lot of electricity. And it's already a known fact that, you know, prison youth is so, is gonna be so big. That they're gonna wind up having to build their own power, that station. Whether it's gonna be, they're talking about solar, solar, you're gonna need. Solar panels from here to, uh, from, from exit three oh nine to, up to, to Martin's Creek, that, you know, that's a lot of power. Or wind, I don't know how, how that's gonna work, they're gonna wind up putting towers. The other is that they're gonna have to build some kind of generation plan, maybe a mini nuclear plant. Okay, and then you're also talking about, are they gonna use diesel power, and then you're talking about noise, quite a bit of it. So that's the other issue, I mean, this is, we're under, this is probably one of the biggest breakthroughs we've been through. In the past fifty years, okay, AI is everywhere, okay, and without it. A lot of things are not getting done today, I use it every day and without it, I would have to spend a week just to do a day's work that I'm doing now. So it's very, it's essential, and it's gonna be part of our life more and more every day. So we need, thi- this needs to, to show that electrical power consumption has to be. It, it's data centers with their use have to offset the price of electricity, if they're gonna take it off the grid, and if they're gonna put in. Uh, some kind of power, uh, center or some kind of, uh, electrical power, uh, generation. Yeah, also, it has to be, well, I know that it's, it says. It goes off, it said, well, it's a forty per watt, they got, it's gonna be needed, you know, so that's gonna be a date regulated thing. But the main concern is the rising costs of electric, of electricity for, for Smithville County, for the, for the average consumer. That's the big concern, water, hundred thousand gallon is too much, and. The, according to the research that I did, you could certainly put in the ordinance that are closed loop, you could ask them for a closed loop. Close loop is essential, you don't wanna, you wanted, you want them to use the refrigerant rather than water. Refrigerant is more economical, uses less electricity, and it's easier to maintain. And we don't run into, uh. Using more water than we need to, I did some. Some, uh, stats, and at thirty six million five hundred thousand gallons per day. Uh, on average, if, if the, if a single family home uses four hundred gallons a day. Of water, that would be enough to. To supply two hundred and fifty single family homes per year, at two hundred gallons per day, you're talking. Five hundred homes per year, and. The in-between would be, uh, somewhere around three hundred gallons, you're talking three hundred thirty four homes. Will get that kind of water every, per year.
Okay, so what are you looking for from us, uh, comments, because you already got this hour time.
For sure, um, and. Because of how, um. Not robust our current data center ordinance is, um, even if you are not a hundred percent thrilled with what this one is like. Um, I will request that the board continue to adopt the one that we have now, simply to put more regulations in place. Um, if this is a further discussion that you want to have, I'm more than happy, did more notice on the next agenda. So then talk about what changes you want and if we have to advertise them, then that is.
Sorry, so I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of this ordinance. With the condition that they later do further, um, studies into the water consumption. Requirements of data centers and also how power, uh, for data centers will be handled and any cost increases that may occur. Would be addressed for these residents. Because I know you want to keep this moving, and then they, like you said, they can adjust it later.
I'd like to add one other thing is that I, um, the Monroe County Training Commission had comments.
Oh, okay, we didn't think of that, dude.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, thank, I'll, I'll hold on my motion.
Monroe County provided us a review letter late yesterday after we, um, I caught it in my, you know, this afternoon. Um, they provided, um. A furniture of things to just keep in mind, there are a couple that we want to pursue as well as the. Um, conditions regarding water consumptions and cost determined, um, regarding the electricity, um. That's also something to be.
The what, the one I'd like for us to really consider is number seven. Of that letter, it says while decommissioning is addressed, it's recommended the township require a bond or similar mechanism be issued to ensure adequate financing. Some place for.
Yeah, that's a good.
Yep. Because if they go broker, they don't have the fund.
Right, or even if they just.
They go.
Go somewhere else, yeah.
Is that so, Ben, from how we're coming or can?
Yeah, I'm touched, thank you. John, did you look at the comments from the way I finished? No, I'm just looking at it right now.
And what is, I'm trying to understand, what's the rush of getting this passed?
Um, do you recall when Alex submitted the current regulations versus the revised regulations? Uh, he, he submitted a eleven five seventeen paper comparing what we have now.
Right, I could, yeah, I saw it.
Um, so it would be extremely detrimental to township, in my own opinion, if we had a data center coming in with current regulations. Um, we would not have the protections on water and electricity and buffers that we do, as well as noise. Um, and I think the requirements both from ten future and doing a lot of research that Alex did in Virginia. Uh, it is important to continue to protect residents by having robust regulations, um. And perhaps someone who's looking at a data center, uh, will look at this town, if we don't have, I know exactly what I have to comply with, I'm not interested, let's go somewhere else. Whereas the earlier vague. Ordinance and, and regulations that we have in place right now, uh, may be a little bit easier for a guy.
When is it set for adoption?
Uh, it is being considered for adoption on October twenty seventh, even more of supervisor.
So if we were to make changes. Then it would have to get, that would delay that process.
That would actually, I would want to defer that from, you are allowed to make the maintenance changes to ordinances without having to cycle it back.
But your changes can be made, you don't have to re-advertise, you don't have to do any of that, of any major change, but that's.
So what's, what was, let's say, Gene suggested about the decommissioning, the address to a bond, would that be considered?
There's no bonding requirement in the ordinance as it stands, and that would be a change that would have to be re-advertised, right, okay.
It does currently say.
But we could change.
A decommission agreement.
Do that again.
It does currently demonstrate that there is a decommission agreement required, um, so I don't know if adding a change to say that. A, a bond or other similar financing would be required as part of that agreement, would be a demand in this or not, but I will leave that up to you.
I, I don't think so, but I mean, maybe John can wait as based upon his engineering expertise.
Well, what is it, what does it currently say, the, the agreement can be entered in?
Well, can we set a bond right at the time of the lease, respect to the agreement? We do know, we do know that our construction looks gross, but the, the people know that there's gonna be a net worth. If you don't say something in the ordinance, you're not really putting in that, but can all notice that there could be such an issue. I, I would not be comfortable with that without re-advertising, but that's, you know. If I am wrong and it did not have to be advertising, re-advertising doesn't hurt anything, it just costs additional money. But it doesn't prevent the process from looking forward. Plus, you have the issue that has to go back to the Monroe County Planning Commission, if this is a zoning change, I don't think this is a zoning change, but.
Okay, well, we can absolutely, um, put the notice of bond in, I'll, I can have Alex draw up. An amendment, if you're willing to, uh, have this go through as is, and then next meeting, if you remember. Will immediately discuss the amendment regarding the bond, your concerns for water and electrical, it's in this bond.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that.
Um, I actually have a question regarding the NPC interview, John, I know this is the first time you are seeing this. Um, but item six, recommendation of making transportation replans were fired. Would that be covered as part of what's already in the township's salary, or is that something that we should add?
Well, it's, it's not covered, I'm, I'm trying to understand. I mean, are the components so large, they, the data centers that they mean special?
That's, that's, yeah, I'm, I'm trying to understand what the need for that paragraph is, they, they don't, they don't have regular deliveries of equipment, once they get it in there, it's in there. You know, but the computer racks are gonna fit on a standard truck. Also have an issue that, you know, it's interstate commerce, people can go on whatever roads they want to go on. Unless they're, you know, weight restricted or something like that, so I'm not sure you can say, well, you only can travel this road or that road. Unless there's some rational relation, reasonable restriction to that.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't think that's a good one, I think there's better ones in here.
The minimum acreage?
Yeah, that's interesting, kind of maybe appropriate.
Not sure if they're saying you have a one acre minimum in ED and industrial, you could put a data center on one acre.
That's a very big one, but what's that hurt? I mean, I don't, I don't know what the, what it hurts, I mean, if you need three acres for a data center. You're not gonna buy a one acre lot, you're gonna make sure you buy a three acre lot.
Right, you're not gonna use a hundred thousand gallons of water a day, you're not gonna put a strain on the power system, so it's not gonna be an issue, and they're not gonna put that kind of infrastructure.
We can move that. The environment. Where, 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 that's, that's hypothetical, we don't know what, what they propose to do once they get there.
No, but I think what David's saying, you can only get so big if I'm a one acre lot.
Right, but these places, they're gonna use more than you need. Right, according to the way this is written up, they're gonna need, uh, a way of buffering the, uh, sound?
Right, I mean, you can, you can even make the buffer requirements, I mean, they could, yeah. Okay, uh, we'll be opening it up to, uh, public comments to see if you guys have anything you want to add to this, and then we'll see if we can, can wish anybody.
Uh, Zach, take your name, please, for a record. Um, Zach Klotowski, one oh nine clubhouse court, East Drive, PA. Uh, there's obviously a reason, I've said this before, there's obviously a reason that we're working on this ordinance. And we've been working on it for so long, uh, there's obviously a data center coming to this area, whether we know about it or not publicly, someone, somewhere along the line knows about it. A lot of fingers pointing at Robert, especially with his, uh, his, um. Desire to do this and push this through, and to obviously push it through as fast as it is. Uh, there's, there's. Seems like, uh. He's involved in something here that is not gonna be good for the community, there's no way around it. What does a data center bring to the community, what, what does it? Give us, what, what do we get out of it, okay, so. You mentioned price increase in electricity, that's not positive. Uh, do we get faster internet, or what to do, uh? We get a huge, huge, huge strain on water, I have three ponds on our property right now. That normally have about five feet of water in them, bone dry, bone dry. All this fish that we had in there, dead, bone dry, it was a dry summer, so. When this comes down to this, this data center is not gonna shut down, they're just gonna drill, drill down deeper and suck more of our water. And we're gonna have to deal with it, and we're gonna be the ones at the shit end of the stick. Um. I still, uh, uh, anyone could provide any positive to this that would. Be a reason for anyone to push past this and do that, it, there, there is none, I, I, if, if there is, speak up, but. Until then, I don't see anything positive for the community in this data center, is it gonna make people's taxes go down, or property tax go down? No, is it gonna bring money into the area? No, not really, it's gonna be a couple people get a job out of it, but. Not anything great, it's not gonna bring outside any people to come visit the data center, hey, come look at this sweet data center, guys, let's come, let's go to Smithfield Township, that's what we want to do, look at the data center here. Um. There's a lot of, a lot of green space here, the great thing about the Poconos is the green space and the Pocono Mountains, not the Pocono data centers. Um, let's keep them out, we don't need them, it's not good for us, it's not good for our water, it's not good for our health, it's not good for our family, it's not good for anything, what, what's? What's the hurry in it? Why are we pushing it so fast, and obviously, the. Couple people in the crowd, no one knows, no one cares, it's just gonna get pushed through, because Robert wants it pushed through, Robert's pulling all the strings. And it's gonna get pushed through because Robert wants it.
Okay.
So, I think, I think that, um. We should really think on this, I don't think we should hurry and go back and amend it, I think there's a lot more. Positive things we could be doing and planning in this town rather than the data center. So let's keep that in mind, or cross over data centers, green space over data centers. And Robert's a weasel, and he's obviously not here because he doesn't give a shit.
Yes. My name is Damian Jezies, uh, I do have more of a concern, where when I was driving through Toby Hannah today, there was signs in people's yard that said, uh, and I quote. Nuclear powered AI data center coming soon. So it's a little suspicious how this ordinance is getting pushed through, when the military complex up in Toby Hannah is gonna start installing nuclear powered data centers. And, uh, if that makes its way down to us, the amount of water, used as cool that would be enormous.
And I mean, it, it seems like, he said this all before Robert, and he's brought his concerns to Robert, and Robert's basically told him to shut up. And, and, and obviously, he's told him to shut up and not take it into consideration, because yet, it's the exact same wording that we've talked about before, but. Here again, and getting, you guys are gonna approve it tonight, and then it's gonna go to the October twenty second meeting, which is next week. And then you're gonna vote it in, and then all of a sudden, next thing you know, next move by, by November, there's gonna be, what he said, signs for a data center. And you said, oh, it's gonna be nuclear powered, like, yeah, it could be, and it might not be, it seems like a big, a big. And you said, oh, it's gonna be nuclear powered, like, yeah, it could be, and it might not be, it seems like a big, a big stretch for a data center, nuclear power, but like, you can't stop billion dollar corporations, yeah, they'll build a nuclear power places. It's crazy that he's saying that, that's.
Yeah, it's true, but the, the new, new nuclear, there are many, many, many nuclear plants that are gonna be using a different form of cooling their water. Okay, so, yeah, that, if they're using a regular nuclear plant, they're gonna need, you know, tons of water, more than, than, they'd have to take it from the river.
Yeah, I mean, the natural beauty of.
But you bring up a very important question, and one that hasn't been addressed. What is the benefit of having the, what, what will the township get out of having an A I data center? In the, what kind, what kind of fund will it apply to the, to the treasury that offered that it's actually?
I, I, I think you're missing the point. Um, these are all good questions. But the point is, someone who wants to build a data center can come in here right now and build it pretty much any way they want, because we don't have an ordinance that controls it. The purpose of this ordinance and the reason why we're trying to push it through is not to enable a developer to build a da- data center, it's to control, and I'll use the word for it as much as we can legally, the construction of a data center, that's the reason for trying to get it adopted quickly, and even if it's not perfect, as we've been saying, add amendments to it, but the important thing is, is to protect the township. Uh, because right now, we are pretty wide open.
Look, Ron, you said that we can, we can fix something out here without, not, and not a major change.
No, minor change, now again, what's minor versus what's major, everyone has different ideas about.
So that, uh, it doesn't, it doesn't, this doesn't become a loophole where it says, you know, water withdrawal, it should reference, uh, description, the, I guess it's B. B. B, yeah, B, three B, there was a, D I I should reference, uh, B, uh, three B, B. Okay?
So that. I, I, I don't think that would be a, a major change, or you're basically doing, changing format, and affecting to put it in another, in another place.
Right, because this way it'll, it'll specifically specify that if they're using water, it has to be recycled fact.
Yeah, I, I don't think that would be a major change, but again, who knows what some judge may say. That, that's the problem we always have, is if, you know, no matter what we may say here, go to court and a judge says, this is it, that's it, so, love to change. But I don't think that would be a major change.
So if that's something we can, we can master, I think you could, okay, can we, I'd like to ask for that.
So that was to confirm.
In util, in utilities, uh, F utilities, paragraph three, water and sewer. Uh, three C, I I. D, well, actually, all of C should reference three B, B. The description, the amount of, or portion of water withdrawn that will be recycled and discharged, and by what means?
Um, so to make sure I understand, what you're adding, and by what means, comma, in compliance with item C below?
No, that, that B, that three C should be in compliance with three B, B, like in victim.
Okay, so if I add a number three on item C, saying all, you know, anything through the Delaware Basin Commission shall comply with inside of.
Right.
Okay.
I'd like to just piggyback on what our engineer, Ron, uh, John said. Robert and the supervisors have been very proactive in developing, uh, ordinances that we don't have, and also refining the ones that we do, for example, we just, uh, a lighting ordinance, and we're working on a sign ordinance. Um, whether the supervisors know of a data center project or not, I don't know, and I don't know anybody on the board here that would know of any potential projects. What we do know is, as, uh, this gentleman over here mentioned, that there's something coming up in Toby Hannah, and we're seeing that around us, and as John said, we're just trying to be proactive. They could come in here tomorrow and say, we wanna put a data center up, and we don't really address how they would do that, which is why we're writing this ordinance. We, so they are allowed to do it, cause it is a, uh, allowable use in the M one, I believe it would be allowed.
N T D, I think, no.
Yeah, I think it's additional, yeah, which is something, you know, we don't really want. Um, but the reality is, the reality is, they're not gonna put a data center on a five acre parcel. It's just not practical, if you look at these data centers that are going in down in Texas, they are as big as Smithfield Township, they are enormous. So we're just trying to be proactive.
Yeah, we're perfect on Mountain Manor too, so it seems like that's why we're getting barred from what we're doing there, and we're direct connect to the aquifer with our D E P well. That it seems like, uh, we're getting purposely pigeonholed into something, so Robert can, uh, get his greasy little.
He can't take your van.
Huh?
He can't take your van.
Mm-hmm.
No, they can't.
Mm-hmm.
There's no such thing as eminent domain on private land.
Ah, yeah, look at it up, look at the whole Delaware Water Gap, that's what happened up there.
Well, that would be government doing it, not a data center doing it.
Yeah.
The government can do it, but Smithfield Township can't do it for a private entity.
Yeah, they'll do what they can, you know, to stop you from launching business.
Alright, so our, our objective is to put some conditions on this, so the supervisors can move it forward. And then, uh, with the caveat that they can, uh, adjust it later with some of the concerns that we have, with some minor changes that maybe, uh, they could do as part of the approval, which is what.
Right, so I've already written in adding a C three, as discussed earlier.
Right, and I think you could do that without.
Yeah, Ron said that that was a minor change, so I won't need to re-advertise for that. Um, other things that you have discussed is adding the bond requirement, the decommissioning agreement. Reducing, uh, I think it was James who mentioned reducing the hundred thousand dollar number, or hundred thousand gallons.
They have to, it's, it's, it's a demonstrate, they have to, it, it says that they, they, they show, but they, you put in a hundred thousand gallons. Okay, that, that figure should, that number should be there, they have to, actually, they should show what their usage is gonna be, okay, and we know what, and it has to be, they have to, they have to show the, uh, uh, what they're actually going to do, how they're gonna get there, they're gonna have to provide the data and the research that show that the exact amount of water that they're gonna use.
That's already in here.
Yeah, that, that is a requirement, but would you.
Right, but with this, they say they, with this, it said they can use a hundred thousand gallons.
Correct, so would you feel comfortable if that number was reduced to fifty thousand?
But what's it based on, we, we need to research what's the question. If you're also pulling a number out of the air, it doesn't make any sense.
Thank you, that's exactly what I was trying to get at.
Right.
Okay, it's not based.
It should be a real, realistic number, and typically, data, uh, data centers are not gonna pull water at the ground and dump it in the sewer, because that's just wasteful, they're gonna do a recirculation system and have a pooling tower to minimize the amount of water that's being.
And that's what, that's what one of the, one of the state require, and one of the states in the, uh, informationary home, they're asking that, that has to, that they're using that type of system.
Okay.
That's for them to do that.
Alright, so just to reiterate, we've got, um.
Bond requirement for decommission agreement.
Right, yeah.
Reducing a hundred thousand gallons per day requirement, understanding that research needs to be completed to find a viable number. Uh, requesting a closed loop system for water in the same space, and adding an acreage requirement in the N one and E D S.
Right, and then do we have the one on decommissioning? The, uh, the bond.
Yeah, that's.
Okay, and then, are there any other comments in the Monroe County Planning Commission?
The only thing I wanna say about this water consumption requirement, this is straight out of D R B C regulations, but anyway, not this data center. It's the water withdrawal, a hundred thousand gallons per day or more, or a thirty day average, from any source or company within the Delaware River Basin, that's that's for anyone.
But it doesn't, it doesn't, uh, reference it.
I'm sorry.
It doesn't reference it, yeah.
Yes, it does, I'm reading, it's a Delaware River Basin Commission.
Yeah, but it doesn't, but, but the number is arbitrary, it's a, it's just.
No, he just said it's.
Well, let me ask, let me ask this question, okay, I, I, my brain here is, it works differently, uh, that, when, when did they come up with this number, what year, what decade, okay?
That's a fair question, I don't know, but a while ago.
Okay, so fifty years ago, a hundred thou, we, you know, a hundred thousand gallons of water a day, it wasn't a lot of water. But today, a hundred thousand gallons, as the population increases, it's a lot of water.
Agreed, that's why we're gonna keep it in the, for, for recommendations, thank you, research that. Alright, so any other, from the, the four members here, any other things in the Monroe County Planning Commission letter that we would want to consider, John, anything you suggest?
Uh, well, I guess, like I discussed, yeah, number four, that's okay, uh, they say, and I kind of agree with them, I think we just ought to look at number three. Uh, they are pointing out that that landscape buffer of a hundred feet may be excessive, uh, I've never seen one that big myself, anywhere, uh.
Does that mean that the buffer has to be a hundred foot, or it'd be a hundred feet from the building?
No, because you've gotta have, you've gotta have a setback of two hundred feet, and then within that two hundred feet, you've got a plant, a hundred foot wide strip of vegetation, you've got to create basically a force.
Okay, so let's, let's make the recommendation as part of that, that, that they reevaluate the landscaping buffer requirements.
Like the highway doing?
Yeah.
Okay.
But, but, hey, there. Um, pardon me, but why, why make it easier versus harder to do? Uh, if, if you're gonna minimize it, I, it seems like you're making it easier for a data center to come in and do it. I would suggest making it harder versus easier, and then we can set back.
But it also needs to be reasonable with other things that are occurring in the county.
Right, you, you are correcting your thought, but if a judge, you keep referring to the judge, if a judge decides that it's unreasonable, he may say arbitrarily, twenty feet's gonna enough. And then you have almost nothing, so you, you, you're better off to start out with a number that is reasonable, and you don't think is gonna be challenged by the people who are building the data center.
Yeah, but I mean, wouldn't that just, wouldn't, instead of going to a judge, wouldn't they come to you for, per se, uh, special exemption, or uh, or something like that, versus going to the judge, and then you guys, then they'll put the power back into your court again.
You're, you're, you're correct in the process, but if we're denied, their next step would be, we're, I don't know, I, I don't have a strong feeling, I'm just pointing out that, that planning commission seems to think that that's successful.
Yeah, and it is probably not consistent with what other developments are, which is where they were challenged. So all we're saying is, let's reevaluate that later, it'll get passed the way it is, and then we can take time to reevaluate whether or not you know, or something like that.
Okay.
Only because of the legal aspects of what we're doing, understood, okay.
I also like number five, where it recommends the township consider applying a maximum percentage of woodlands that may be removed for data centers. Prohibiting excess woodland removal would better preserve the natural environment and mitigate stormwater related impacts.
Yeah, Pocono Township learned that lesson hardly.
They did.
While the solar farm came in and just stripped an entire mountain of wooden, for, yeah.
Yeah.
For a solar farmer.
So we could ask them to also include number five?
Actually, probably your recommendation should be, David, if I've been suggested, is that we take a closer look at the Monroe County Planning Commission.
Well, that's an easy way to do it, I just thought it was a couple, but now.
But I think, I think they all have some merit.
Yeah.
As we talk about it.
Okay, so let's just amend that to just include all items in the Monroe County Planning Commission letter, make it easy. Yes.
I'm, I'm a little unclear about major and minor changes, and there's a, you're trying to only allow minor changes, is that what I'm hearing, or we're trying to avoid major changes, and if so, why?
If you have a major change, you have to re-advertise the ordinance before you can adopt it. If it's a minor change, you don't have to re-advertise, you can adopt it that same night as the ordinance is being adopted, or proposed.
So is that working against us if we have to re-advertise?
I don't know if it's working against us, but again, until you have this ordinance in place, someone can come in and say, I put in a data center, and all I have to do is buy one Hershey bar and, uh, put in this road and I'll steal later, you know, so that's a concern that I'm told, I have no idea if any data centers are coming in, I'm coming in, I'm, there's the the schlob, if you will, you know, I'm not really in the loop with things, but that's the concern, if, if we have to re-advertise, then something may happen in the meantime. If in fact, Mr. Clankoff is correct, then maybe there's something lurking in the background that we don't all know about.
Hmm, right, speaking of which, you, referring to the judge, uh, John, just allowing, or having an opinion and just allowing a setback. What judges are we talking about here?
We can't be judged, we just have the, the Water Gap Wellness Center application, they came in to, uh, build a recreation center, okay? And the township has denied that based upon various things, saying, no, you're, first of all, you're not an inn, you're a drug and alcohol center, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, well, they now have appealed that to county court. And a judge will now review the entire file, I figure it is, along with briefs and say whether or not the denial was correct or not.
How can we know whether a judge is pro data center or not?
You have no idea, you're supposed to be pro nothing.
Yeah.
Robert, look at the law, yeah, well, we have to look at the law and then say, okay, this is what I believe the case is, but they're not supposed to be changed either way, even though they're Republican or Democrat, and they have to run for election, and I understand all of that, it's political. When they get on the bench, you're supposed to be apolitical, so.
And also, there seems to be a lot of hypotheticals in this discussion, and there's also a lot of tremendous technical know-how that we may or may or may not have from an engineering standpoint, for instance.
I agree, lighting ordinance is the same thing, it's very technical. The, uh, noise ordinance, again, very technical, and, you know, you have issues with those things. Then you hear, uh, thunder miles and miles away, so like, what does an ordinance really, what can you do with that, you know, lighting ordinance, you can see stars a million miles away, so those are, they're tough issues with respect to those ordinances.
And obviously, well, not obviously, I'm, I understand that data centers can be a tremendous revenue source for local municipalities, which is in their favor.
Yes, I, I'm sorcerin' upper Mount Bethel, I've been there now for twenty seven years, and they had a data center that was gonna come in through Amazon, but then they said there wasn't enough power for them to put it there, but that was the big push, that there was gonna be no truck traffic, very minimal truck traffic, very high paying jobs, uh, not a whole lot of no, you know, fumes, odor, noise, et cetera, although I'm told that data centers are a little noisy, uh, and, uh, that, you know, it was gonna be a big plus for the township, because they were gonna put thirteen data centers on seven hundred acres. Uh, which would have been big revenue source for the township, so you have those benefits, but you don't need to have those benefits if that's the side of the side of the equation you're on, if you would like to keep green space and not see things go up and try to be a little bit more environmental. Not so, not so much if you're on that side, you know.
I just understand, just regarding water, that one of the arguments that's been used, um, nationally, it's a little, it's difficult, particularly if they're using well water or tapping into the, the water table locally. It's very hard to figure out where water, where the water table is, and if they draw a lot of water out, residents can complain. And the data center people say, well, prove it, like, prove it's coming from your.
You would hope that they would get a high probability, there's someone with those qualifications to try to make that call. Our ordinance does require, they can hook up to public water if it's available, but then they have to get certification from the public water company that they can supply the demand. Uh, hopefully, the water company has enough knowledge of their own system that they can honestly answer that question if it's asked of them, if they're gonna drill their own well.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, that's in, uh, that's in three.
That's in nine.
Power, emergency management, water and sewer, okay.
Yep, that's it. Three.
I mean, they gotta, they, they gotta do. They gotta do all sorts of well testing, water, water drawdown, uh, it is. They gotta do a lot of work if they're gonna do their own well.
And as, as Zach said, we have droughts. And I remember in the seventies, there, there was a huge multi-year drought, and if we, if we have low local water. What can the data center do to augment, to get their required, is a hundred, a hundred thousand. I don't think seems arbitrary, but if they don't have enough ground water, where are they gonna get it from? Can they take it from the Delaware? Can they take it from Broadhead?
I, I don't know the answer for that.
Yeah, so we can't really pad our zoning regulations. If, particularly if the county doesn't want it, we just have to set in place something that is flexible enough to protect us.
Right, and, and the other thing that you have to keep in mind. Although this, maybe it's a little counterintuitive, but. Nobody, but nobody wants to spend millions and millions and millions of dollars building a structure. That isn't gonna have enough water to operate there, so. They're going to work hard upfront to make sure that whatever water source they're utilizing is gonna be sufficient. I mean, that's, that's only good business sense.
Yeah, I understand that, I, I know that data centers are different. There's, it's almost like a misnomer, so they're not storing data, they're computing, it's more like a G P U, it's not like a computer. They're not storing information, but they're, they're A I requires. So there's a, there's an economy scale that works like, and favors huge buildings, as you mentioned. Um, and it's, and then they require. But it, there's such incredible power and cooling. And that, that technology is evolving, but it's, it's. How can they, they really want a large space or, um. So I'm not, it, it's, it's a misnomer to think that. The power that they're gonna be, is, seems to fit arbitrary, what we're trying to design. As the industry is growing so fast, the A I, data center industry. Um, so it's, I appreciate it, it's a, it's a puzzle, you're trying to figure out how do we protect ourselves in a, in a dynamic situation. Um, and it seems to me it requires a lot of knowledge on, on our, from the engineer. And with land management. Um, and do we have, is the community weighed in on this in any general way?
That's what they have the public hearings advertised for.
Are we gonna have a data center public hearing?
Yeah, that's what you just said.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah. I don't think you can demand that.
One thing as fast as the data centers, as this whole thing seems to be going, is it maybe. Get this ordinance in place, and then there may just need to be. A data center ordinance, like a continual revision of it as fast as it's going, you know, as they get smaller, it'll need to be. Booked out again, as they use different coolants, it'll need to be looked at again, so not just like one and done, just.
But I, I can, you know, a, a good example, I, I've, I've been around a long time. Uh, zoning really hit the municipal, and Ron can attest to it, zoning really hit the municipalities back in the urban sense. And that's when a real estate boom really started, uh, hit the Poconos here hard, uh. A lot of people moving out of Philadelphia, moving north, a lot of people moving out of New York City, moving this way. So residential pressure was extreme, very similar to what we're talking about today. Uh, with data centers, my point being, these townships, they were amending their ordinance almost on. A bi-monthly basis, I mean, they had to, developers were coming up with new product, different ways of citing houses, different things. And. It was a constant amendment in the zoning ordinances, and, uh. As a designer, I could not go and just. Use the ordinance that I bought three months ago, because it would be outdated. I would always have to, if I got a new client that came in and wanted to do a project, I had to go to the township and find out what the latest ordinance was, because they were constantly changing it, so. Yes, it's inconvenient to change it, and yes, we'd like to get it right the first time, but I think, as you stated. This is an evolving industry, and the best we can do is try to keep up with it.
Right, that's exactly what we're trying to do, so I'd like to move forward and give the supervisors some recommendations. For small amendments to what we have, and then considerations for future amendments when we have the time. And additional resources to research it. Again, this is just something we want to get in so that we get ahead of anybody, not that we know of anybody coming. But then we can get this in place, so that's where we're at. So Julie, if you want to kind of read back where we are with the, uh, motion that was set forth?
Sure, um, so a viable motion would be to add the de minimis change for item C three. Um, that references complying with item V five with the same section. Um, adding a bond requirement to the decommission agreement, uh, reducing the hundred thousand.
The, the, the first one you mentioned is something they will change, it's a minor change, right?
No, that, the, or yes, the first one, the item.
Change this one.
Minor change.
Okay, so the others, the future one, the other ones you're saying would be in the, in future.
Correct, these will be on your November meeting for discussion. Um, and that'll be the bond requirement, uh, reducing the hundred thousand gallons per day number upon doing research to find out what's viable. Um, adding a request for a closed loop system, adding acreage requirements to the M one and D D zones for this use. Reevaluating landscaping requirements to ensure that this buffer is reasonably consistent with other buffers that the township imposes. And applying a maximum percentage of woodlands that can be removed, and in general, looking over all items in the M P C letter. M C P C, excuse me.
And also the other, all the recommendations in the, uh. Monroe County Planning Commission.
Yeah, at M C P C.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments?
So that, alternative cooling sources.
She mentioned that.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah, that's the.
Anybody else? Okay, alright, any seconds?
Second.
Dave, was that?
Any discussion? Good, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, so moved. Okay. That was fun. So we're on public comment, this is for anything that you want to talk about, anybody have anything?
Zach, one oh nine, Colorado Court. Uh, that's for, it's sure Robert is supposed to be here.
No, he's not.
Or not, but, uh, he hasn't showed up to work in quite a few months now, I don't know if you guys are aware of it. He's scared to come to work, even though we got two armed. Constables back here, detecting all of us, um. I would maybe make a motion for you guys to appoint someone else liaison, I think, is that what Robert is for you guys?
Between, he's, no, we, we, I don't say we work for him, but we.
Work with him or work under him?
We're just the volunteers.
Okay, I, I understand, but I, I think I seen, when I looked up the positions for this, uh, he was like the, the liaison. Between.
He's an elected official.
Yeah.
He's elected by the citizens.
Okay, I'm, I'm not sure, maybe I seen something wrong.
One of three.
Yeah.
And we have no authority to. Remove him or do anything, the only, the only people that can do it are the citizens, through a recall vote, we have no authority to do it.
Yeah, um, no, I was just, I, I think I see, I might have seen something wrong with the website, because I think it listed him in, under. That, under the, um, planning commission as like the liaison.
Oh, he might be, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Believe you may be right.
Yeah, yeah, so I was.
Liaison, and he's saying.
Yes, you are right.
Get another liaison if he's not.
I think, I think maybe someone who's been more present at the meetings, um. Robert hasn't been here in three or four months, so that might be a little. He's scared, um.
Do you know, do you know why he hasn't been here?
Robert has been attending meetings virtually after somebody stepped in front of his party friend, so that's what we think.
Okay.
He's scared. But we have security guards here, security guards, constables here for that.
They're not here all day, but anyway, we, we can certainly look into him.
No, so, yeah, I was just.
The only reason, we, we actually requested a supervisor, years ago, we requested a supervisor attend our meetings. So they had a better understanding of what our discussion was, instead of just the meeting minutes, they understood what the intensity of our concerns were.
It would be nice to have him though.
Yeah, absolutely, I agree with you, that's why we asked a supervisor to attend.
I think, uh, that might be a good thing to ask again.
I agree.
People on the board seem pretty reasonable, that, and they seem to have an understanding of what's going on here, so. Yeah, I just think.
Okay.
Take your rest to get rid of that guy, he's a weasel, so, thanks, Senator.
Any other public comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Second.